We are recording.
Thank you. All right, I do have six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, July 1st, 2024. The time is six o'clock. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. Just a reminder, anyone who comes forward and speaks, please provide your name and address into the microphone. Be aware that we are recording this. At this time, I would look for a motion to approve the evening's agenda.
I'd like to approve the agenda with the change of moving nine B up to follow five B. There's a lot of people in the audience for that particular item.
Okay.
Move it up, and that way they can go out and enjoy the day afterwards if they so choose.
Right, I'll offer a second on that motion. So there is a motion to take item nine B. There is a motion to take item nine B and move it forward between item five B and item six, public appearances. That motion was made by trustee Schneider and seconded by myself. Is there any further discussion or questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. This evening, we are six. The motion carries six zero. At this time, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So presentations, we are off to item number five this evening. We, five A has been canceled. We are off to five B, which is the 2023 audit by CLA. Director Magar.
Yes, Amber, our head auditor from CLA is going to present the audit. I handed it out to you guys, so you should have it in front of you. She's gonna hit the highlights so your eyes don't glaze over. I'm gonna try.
You do such a great job, though. It's very rarely do we get glazed.
This report will be added to our website, so it'll be available tomorrow at some point.
So excellent. I think most are familiar faces. But again, my name is Amber Giriski. I'm a principal with CLA here in Green Bay.
Welcome.
So I'm gonna start on page one, the independent auditor's report. We've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Village of Swamaco as of and for the year ended December 31st, 2023. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the village. That's a clean, unmodified opinion, the highest opinion we can provide from an audit standpoint. The next paragraph talks about how we do that, how we provide our opinion. We don't look at all of the transactions of the village. We use materiality, risk-based approaches, and that's explained within that paragraph within the standards. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Our responsibility on page two is to issue an opinion on the financial statements within the standards. So the rest of that is some reading, nighttime reading material. I would recommend doing it late at night. So page thirteen, page thirteen through fifteen are our government-wide financial statements. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on these because it's not really how the village adopts your budget. But what it does do, it includes all of your long-term debt, your capital assets, your proportionate share in the Wisconsin retirement system, and so forth. So a lot of non-cash type items within there. The one item I want to draw your attention to is the Wisconsin retirement system had previously been in an asset position and is now in a liability position. So if you see pension liability on here, that is not something new. It's just the market conditions based off of the state's actuarial study determine that to be a liability. So sometimes people say, wait a minute, when did I get a pension liability? Didn't. That is the Wisconsin retirement system proportionate share. Then on page sixteen, so page sixteen starts your fund financials or how the village adopts your budget. Just a couple items I want to draw attention to here in your major funds, and then I'll kind of go into the utilities and your non-major. The general fund had approximately 4.6 million in cash as of December 31st, 2023. That translated into about 2.5 in total fund balance, which is near the bottom of the page. When we look for financial health, we like to look at that unassigned fund balance right above there, about 1.6 million. That historically, for a long time, we had said anywhere between 15% to 25% is an ideal situation. Obviously, inflation, those types of things, kind of increases that a little bit. I like to see more in that 20% to 30% range, give or take, depending upon what other, how you're saving for capital improvements and those things in other ways. Currently, the village is at about 27%, so a good, healthy fund balance, not over, not really under. We're kind of right in that perfect range. You do have a capital improvements fund that has about 3.9 million in cash available. It's on that same page, and some of that's levy money, debt proceeds, so forth, that is available. So what that unassigned fund balance allows you to do is kind of have some flexibility when it comes to one-time projects or items or unexpected operational items. You don't want to rely on that number in your budget and operations because it will dwindle down quickly, but a good fund balance there. Debt service has about 81,000 in fund balance remaining, and capital improvements, as I mentioned, about 3.5. There is a breakdown of that capital improvement, so what all of that is earmarked for, and I'll mention that here in a bit. Tax incremental district number one has about 565,000 in fund balance, about 1.2 in cash, but there's some timing there, and I'll give the unreimbursed costs as well in a bit. If I go then to page 22, there's just a summary version of the general fund budget to actual that'll give you a breakdown. A lot of your budget surplus, so you budgeted, your final budget was a balanced budget, the actual was a surplus of about 270,000. A lot of that came in the miscellaneous line, if you see there. A lot of that is interest revenue. That's typically not budgeted for, and the interest rates were higher, obviously, in 2023. You do not want to budget high for interest because if you don't get it, you're building that into your budget. So that is higher, and it looks a little bit, I'm gonna say odd, but it's not really odd. It's correct. Then if we go to page 23, these start your proprietary funds, so your water, sewer, you have your garbage and stormwater. The water utility had approximately 580,000 in operating cash available and about 1.4 million in restricted cash on page 23. The net position, which slides over, it's a little bit presentation issue here, but maybe actually I'm gonna stick with that page, Alex. So the water utility had 580,000 in operating cash, about 1.4 in restricted cash, about 1.8 for sewer in operating cash, and about 1.4 in restricted cash. Obviously, those cash balances, I'm gonna talk about the cash flow in a minute. Those cash balances are kind of hard to tell of what those mean and what that can mean for the village, depending upon what your infrastructure needs are, your maintenance in your infrastru, maintenance in your plants and so forth over the next couple of years can have a big impact on here. One project can completely deplete that cash balance. So if we go to page, I'm gonna go all the way to page 26 and talk about the cash flow for a minute. So what we'd like to say is, are you generating enough cash flow from your operations to pay for your capital and your debt? Are you recovering that through your operation, through your rates? The water utility generated about $500,000 in cash from operations and had the transfer out of about 179,000 for the pilot and cash used by capital financing, meaning capital additions and debt and principal and interest, leading to a change in cash and cash equivalents of about $20,000 to the deficit. Sewer generated approximately 763,000 from operations and paid out about 530,000 in capital and principal and interest.
Just a quick question on the deficit. So the change in cash and cash equivalents for the water utility being a delta of 20,000 to 30, is that just periodic? Is that a seasonal issue? Or is there something more systemic?
That will vary based off of the capital needs each year. So you had about $250,000 in capital purchases in water in '23. That's probably without a major road project. I don't remember exactly what those purchases were, but those, that's probably a little bit on the higher end for a year. But that is also just, could be cyclical depending upon the timing.
And our new rate case didn't take effect until mid-June of 2023.
Yes.
Ah, that makes sense. Okay. So it's probably an anomaly?
Yeah, we'll do better for 2025.
Thank you.
Yep. And sewer had a surplus of about 358,000, but if you look at that capital line, there was only 28,000 in capital purchases in sewer. So a high end for sewer, but a very low sewer capital year from that perspective. So it's hard to look at cash flow from a one-year period, but it can kind of, you can kind of see, if you look at the proceeds and debt line and the capital line, and you can kind of get a picture on what that looks like. Page 28 and 29, I'm not gonna spend much time, I just want to explain what they are. This is the advanced tax collections that the village collects for the other taxing jurisdictions, the county, the school, and so forth. So there was about 11 million dollars in cash available and then 12 million to be collected, a total of 23 million that'll be remitted through the tax settlement process or would have been through January and February. Any questions on those numbers? I have a couple other additional numbers in the summary financial information, but staying within the same document, if I go to page 79. As part of the audit, we also review the village's internal controls. We would be required to disclose any non-compliance or findings that we have. And here we have one significant deficiency and no non-compliance. The only significant deficiency is that we prepare this document. It's not really a deficiency. We prepare about 95% of our clients' financial statements. Kay does a great job reviewing and approving these, goes through them in fine tooth comb and approves any journal entries that we have within those. So it's just required by the standards that we disclose it, but that's what that means. Then I'm gonna jump into the summary financial information. I'm not gonna go through all of this page, just touch on a couple. I want to particular your capital projects. So as I mentioned, the capital improvements is about 3.5 million in fund balance. There is a full breakdown on page three of this document, and I'm gonna highlight a couple of those. The equipment replacement has about 1.7 million in it available. Road reconstruction, about 700,000 available. Bridge maintenance, about 152,000, and future capital improvements of about 590,000. That's kind of just a, I'm gonna say a catch-all, can be earmarked for anything. These can change. They're assigned, so they're not set in stone, but that is what the village has earmarked that 3.5 towards. Then if I flip back, Alex, sorry, if I can go back to page one. The text, as I mentioned, tid number one has about 565,000 in fund balance, tid two about 399,000, and tid four about 195,000. If you go to then page four, this is a summary of all of the tax incremental districts, providing you the net unreimbursed project costs, which includes, takes out the fund balance and includes the debt. So tid one has about 1.4 million in unreimbursed project costs, tid two about 77,000, and tid four has over-recovered about 195,000. The debt remaining, tid one has about 1.6 million, and tid two has about 414,000 remaining to be paid off. And that will be paid off 2026. I believe that termination date is 2026 as well. So when or if you look to close that tid early, you want to just make sure that you align that, knowing that you have some outstanding debt remaining.
It's a state trust fund loan, so we can prepay it.
Yep.
If they close early next year, we will prepay that debt.
Any questions on the tid? If you go to page five of this document, just quickly touch on the garbage and garbage recycling. And that has operating revenues of about 878,000 for 2023 and operating expenses of about 809, coming to after grants, interest, and the transfer out, about $57,000 of a change in net position. So a surplus, a little bit lower than 2022, but still a surplus for adding that in. Then if we go to, you can see the water utility is on the next page. As I mentioned, we kind of talked about that. There is a comparison of the rate of return at the bottom. That is skewed for 2023 just because of timing. So I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time focusing on that number. You see that it's a little high. But again, that's the timing of rate case and some expenses, so that should level out coming here in 2024.
Do you think it's closer to the 4.57?
Yeah, so the PSE authorizes a rate, and I believe the authorized rate was probably more in the 6.3, 6.5 about is what they authorize. So that's what they project based off of past history and then going into it. So that's where I would expect it to be more in that, probably maybe 5, 5.5%. Even though they authorize 6, you usually don't always see that. And then the sewer utility is on the next page. And again, the sewer had some capital contributions and impact fees a little bit and interest income, so it had a change in net position of about 1.4 million. That does not equal cash, as I mentioned before. So the cash increase was only about 300,000 with very little capital done during 2023. Then I'm gonna go to the last document, the governance communication. And just a couple things here, this kind of summarizes what we, what I've talked about, has some additional disclosures, but a couple points here. No difficulties encountered in performing the audit on the bottom of page one. No uncorrected misstatements and no disagreements with management. The team, anytime we ask for something, very responsive, very timely. We appreciate that. Does a good job. The one item that is not in here that I just want to make sure that I mention, there were no new accounting policies for 2023, but we did evaluate for the implementation of Gatsby statement number 96, which was subscription-based software. So last year, there were leases. This year was the softwares, which is same concept, but there was none that, there were none that was material or needed to be disclosed on the village's books.
Do you expect that to come next year?
Typically not, unless you're gonna do like a new year P system or something like that. A lot of those are year-to-year, so they're not a contract, which kind of eliminates them from those standards. So unless the standard boards change, change the standard, which they have discussed because they want more recorded, I hope that's way down the line.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Amber and Kay.
I appreciate, I appreciate your preparedness, and as always, this report, you provide all the numbers that we can look through and go through it very diligently, and much appreciated. Thank you.
Excellent. If there's ever any questions, feel free. They all have my contact information. We'd be happy to answer.
So when I read it late at night, call you that?
Yes, yes. Make sure you pay close attention to the required supplementary disclosures. Thank you.
You're cruel. She's got a mean streak in her. All right, let's move on, shall we? So in the approval of the agenda this evening, we moved item nine B up before six. So at this point, at this juncture, we are considering administrative item nine B, which is the review of the Howard Swamaco Historical Society Lease and Memorandum of Understanding. Administrator Kaker, if you would.
Thank you. So as promised in the last village board meeting, I've included in your packets a copy of the 2011 lease agreement, the May 2022 memorandum of understanding, and then a memo from Attorney Lahaki about the village's liability. And then I also included a copy of Code 7.01, which defined the term "park." This is all information for the board to discuss. Happy to answer any questions the board may have, but this is really for a board discussion.
Thank you. Other questions from the board on the documents that have been provided? Anyone?
What actions can we take and what should we take?
Is that a question to the board?
In general. I just, I don't know, I'm just frustrated. I just, I wish you guys would work it out. Trespassing is not good. I don't know. Where do we go from here?
I guess I would.
Do we set different boundaries?
I would, pretty much what you said, I wish the two parties could just be neighborly a little more because there was no violation of the MOU. So I'm not sure what needs to get changed on that. I think just try to get along as neighbors, you know, just like everybody else does. I think that can happen.
I'm speaking out of ignorance. Is there any kind of signage or anything like that delineates what is the park and what is private property?
I don't think so.
Maybe there should be.
That's a good suggestion.
I mean, at least there, people will know if they're on or off where they're supposed to be. It's not, I wouldn't think, be too costly, and it may alleviate some of the issues that were going, someone coming into your backyard or something like that, if I recall. Might help with that.
Um.
What about a roping system? Caution tape?
That's a little odd, I think.
Just for any fun. I mean, other businesses have to put a rope. Containment.
Um, who else?
I was hoping the trees would be enough.
Who else? I mean, if no one else has anything, I'll jump in here. I continue to struggle with this. I mean, this has been ongoing for a significant period of time. When did we start this memorandum of understanding? Years. It's, the majority of my tenure on the board since 2010, to some degree, has involved these same parties and this piece of property. You know, we moved a barn in there, and there was issues. There was the back and forth. The school, there's been issues. We created a memorandum of understanding to deal with issues, and there's issues. We put in trees, and there's issues. And you know, the issues, as I look around here, right, the issues that I'm seeing, I don't see the whole neighborhood coming over here. I see the neighbors circling this area, you know? And these are, this falls into this area where, we've dealt with this before. I get calls on this all the time, right? And I've had to utilize the Chapter 11 Public Nuisances, Peace and Order, Chapter Two, General Nuisances. There's an area 11.31, which discusses public nuisances defined. So when, in the case, an example I can give you, a neighbor had a dog continually coming over to another neighbor's house, and it happened repeatedly, 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 repeatedly. There were tickets issued by law enforcement because that's a violation. And then that went to court. A mitigation, it was, the property was declared a public nuisance. And then there was a mitigation process that was put in place to make sure that those dogs didn't ask access anymore. That's how neighbors, when there's a violation, that's how neighbors do things. I have neighbors, just yesterday, I had neighbors racing around my block, you know, neighbor kids, on their scooters, honking their horns constantly, right? Is that a nuisance? Well, in my mind, it's a nuisance, right? The kids are having fun. It's not, in their mind, it's not a nuisance. The dogs in back, they come racing over to my yard all the time. They do their business in my yard. I pick it up. The horses come by my house. Not all of them, but some people don't pick up after the horses, and their droppings are there. You know what I do? I get a shovel and I shovel it off. And when the neighbors come by and say, hey, would you mind just making sure you pick up after your horses? But it's not a public nuisance. It could be if they continue to do it. We have a, you know, and just to be frank, within this public nuisance policy process, there's a number of areas that, you know, dilapidated buildings, all buildings or structures so old, dilapidated or out of repair, has to be dangerous, unsafe, unsanitary, or otherwise unfit for human repair. That's a nuisance. I just think, I think, you know, guys, everybody here concerned, we're just at this point. If there's a violation, a ball going into a yard happens all the time. I pick them up, I throw them back. If there's a violation that's taking place, if you guys can't take care of it as neighbors, we're in a lot deeper, we're in a lot deeper trouble than anything that we can solve here. We can sit here as, this is my opinion only, we can sit here as a board, and we can recraft this memorandum of understanding. We can discuss this in another month, another year. We can go over this again and again and again. We can put up tape. We could put signs in the ground that say no trespassing, right? We could do all of those things, but it will be something else. And the reason I say it will be something else is because as long as I've been sitting up here, as long as, you know, you guys have been coming in, this has been going on, it has been one thing after another. And it all stems from the fact that there's an absence of cooperation between the two parties involved, who really, you guys are the only ones who can really solve this by coming together, civilly discussing with each other, figuring out, you know, do I want bright yellow tape, you know, to look out my back window on? If you wanted that in my yard, I'd say no way. I'll take the ball rolling in every day. But that's the discussion that's gotta take place. I don't know how we're gonna solve this. I'm open to other issues. I'm open to other suggestions from board members, from the audience, you know, if there's a way to solve this. But I think unless you guys, and you guys come together on this and start having this conversation outside of this, there's no way we, as the grownups in this room, can mitigate the issues that are happening over there. And that's just my opinion, so I'll leave it to somebody else.
I guess the question I'm gonna ask is what problem are we solving? And so I'm new to the frequency of this conversation, but I've heard the treatment of each other, the conversations that happen, and there's different interpretations of how the vocabulary and the tone of those conversations. Trespassing, hours of operation, frequency of operations. I'm trying to figure out which problem we're solving. So if somebody can step forward and tell me that, what this is the problem, I think we can solve that problem using the conversation we've had about two parties working together. But what is it that we're trying to solve?
Well, we gotta open it up, I think, because this is.
Motion to open up the floor.
Second.
Yep. So we've got a motion to open the floor for public comment, and that motion has been, motion was made by trustee Eckert, seconded by trustee Schneider. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Please.
Ruth Lund, 2091, Maggie Lane. I came to you for a few reasons. I did try to go straight to the Historic Society precedent, and the comments that were made to me, instead of saying, I'm sorry, let's handle this, and the reality is, comes back to you. of saying, I'm sorry, let's handle this, and the reality is, comes back to you because they are leases of the property. You do have, and reading this, you do have some obligation, and they have some things that they are not abiding by in their lease. I went through both the lease and the memorandum of understanding, and I do have some requirements or requests to be changed, to be more specific and to help. First of all, the memorandum of understanding states that they can use the barn for parties, rental, and I say, party, rental, whatever, because I don't really know the event that happened, if that was a rental, or if that was just a party. But you have it listed as four or five times, but you also have it stated in there that it's non-binding, meaning they don't really have to follow anything in the memorandum of understanding. So that is a problem, because if you put a rule out or you put a, you need to follow these parameters, but really you don't have to, they don't have to, which is a confusing statement to me. Secondly, the north side of the barn and the west side of the barn, if those could be considered some gray area, it's a rolling hill. No matter what you do there, you can't put a tent up, you really, there's very little use for that property. Make that a buffer. That will give us some space, them some space. And if they don't park on the grass in that circle, which, when they put up the schoolhouse, they claimed that that property in the middle was for activities, not for parking. When they had this party, they had over 60 people parking in that circle. Therefore, there was nowhere for them to go. So they were in my yard. This did not simply be a ball rolling in my yard. They were quite a ways in my yard and opened a gate. So when I explained that to the president, Tim, I was told, put up a fence. I had a fence, and they opened it. I mean, it's just simply respect. I have not complained. I have not come to you and said, oh, my God, they had a book fair and some papers flew in my yard. We sat and listened when they opened the schoolhouse. I went in, I talked to Tim. I had many conversations with Tim last year. The problem that we face is every time we have a question, we have a problem, it's met with animosity and anger, and it escalates. So when I said, you know, there's someone, they opened my gate, he said, wow, that's kind of funny. And I said, no, it's really not funny. Then put up a fence if you don't like it. It raises to that kind of thing. He was in my backyard, checking to see how far he could go beyond the trees. My understanding is the trees were your visual. So those are things that clearly we have to figure out. I tried to figure these things out with him. We've tried to talk to him. That is a block, and maybe what we need is someone from the Historic Society that is not Tim to work with us, because it goes from zero to 100. I simply asked, can you make sure that nobody's on my yard? And it turned into, I'm going to sue you, I'm going to do this. That should never, that conversation should never have even evolved to that. And so there are some things, I think, nobody plays on that side. Nobody goes on that side. It really isn't very useful. There's nothing to put there. As far as where they park, the village has a beautiful parking lot, and put a few handicap on the fence up there for people who can't walk that far, and the rest of them walk. That is a simple solution. And then you have all this space for people renting the building to use. Those are just some suggestions. And those, I mean, the memorandum of understanding, if I have a piece of paper that says, well, I don't really have to follow it, that's a problem. So I think whatever is in the memorandum needs to be binding, because that is the impression we get, like, I don't really have to follow what's here. So I'm sorry that we use this board to be our, basically our middle people, but we, I have tried. I have seriously, I walked through the schoolhouse. I can tell you, it doesn't have a bathroom in the basement, because they did not want to put one in. They have an ADA in the other, in the house. I went and saw the entire building. I spent an hour with Tim looking at the building. I am not trying to be a difficult neighbor. I am trying, I vowed last year they're here to stay. And so this was very disappointing to me, that I went to him, and this was the response. And I actually, he called me on Saturday, and I said, please take care of this. And then on Sunday, he was in my yard when we got home, telling me how much further he could have gone, and then got into an argument with me. And that was when I was like, you are a leasing of this property, and I need to go further. So that is why we are here. That is the problem we have.
Well, I mean, just to make it clear, it's a two-way street, right? This isn't, this isn't about you, and this isn't about the Historic Society. It's about you, and it's about your properties and the Historic Society coming together to solve a problem. It's not, you're coming here in front of the board. The board is the middleman. That's just fine. That's what boards are for, right? I just think that over the course of time, at least from my perspective, the realization is, there are going to continue to be things that come up, and until there's a dialogue, and a reasonable dialogue between the two parties, I don't, we're going to be in this cycle of trying to get the board to solve something that only the two parties can solve. And it falls on both parties, not one, not the other.
I agree with you on that to some degree. But when you're trying to work with somebody, and they don't believe they have to, that is a problem. And quite frankly, I don't violate their rights. I don't play loud music. I'm not running around their property. I'm not letting dogs run all over up there. We are respectful of their property, and I don't think he can honestly, I don't think the Historic Society can say, oh, I'm throwing garbage on their property. I'm up there all the time doing anything. We are peaceful neighbors. And if you need that from my other neighbors, and my other neighbors are not directly on the property, two of them witnessed this, and the one neighbor who's in the back of my house said, I thought it was so odd that people were playing in your yard while you were gone. That is so weird. She was willing to write a letter if you need that. So, but do you need that? This shouldn't be even an issue. This should have simply stopped it. I'm so sorry. This should never happen. And for him to come up here and tell you, I was making booyah, and I couldn't leave it, that is like an absurd thing. He's there, and this happened. So when you rent the building, and nobody has any instructions, and maybe that's where we need to go. Maybe the building needs to have clear rules and guidelines, how it's being rented, when it's being rented, for those people renting it. I mean, when there's gray area of what you can do, that's where the problems come in, Sky. And rules are very important for children, for adults. We all need to understand where our parameters are. And that is why we are asking for you to make sure that there are clear parameters. I mean, I think it's an obvious thing that you don't trespass on people's homes. And when I say they were in my yard and opened my fence, we're talking almost 50 feet from the lot line, halfway through my yard. So that's not catching a ball over there and opening my gate. That is not catching a ball. So I get what you're saying, but when you have an uncooperative party who leases the property, I don't have any other options. Who would you like me to talk to?
I think when it comes to any other property that is leased or utilized in the village, there is the nuisance of peace and order, you know, that calls into play. So, and that is involving law enforcement and fines and a mitigation plan and, you know, everything else. So when there is a violation, you know, of the public peace and order...
So the original problem, when we had the music shaking all of our homes, the police said that they had a, they were allowed to be there. They had a piece of paper saying they were supposed to be there, so they didn't have a problem with it. And that time, they were running through our yards as well. And so I guess, if that's the route, then the police need to understand, if they're renting the building and they're violating our rights, then there are fines to be given.
If there are violations in law enforcement's, then law enforcement's viewpoint, according to the ordinance, they would issue the fines, and then those would go to court. And then after a process of time, it would be declared a nuisance property. I mean, that's one option. The other option is for this board to make the decision to revoke the lease for the Historic Society, right? And I don't think that that's a good option either, obviously.
At this point, you have that option per the lease.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I've read through this thing. I clearly understand it. There's noise ordinances. I mean, that music should have never happened per this lease, the day that they shook all of our homes. They have a quiet, or a quiet clause in here. I mean, there are several pieces of this that are not truly being followed, and that's a problem, because you put a building next to us on a lot, and they don't think that they have to follow all the laws and all the rules of Swamaco. So telling me it's okay for their kids to run my yard for a party, and I have a great idea of why they were there, but I get that this is frustrating. This is frustrating for me. I personally don't want to be here. I don't want to have to do this. I did not want to have to make phone calls. This was not my choice. And the original night that I talked to Tim, I said, let this be a conversation between two of us. And then he came in my yard and was telling me, we had farther to go. And that just put it a whole nother level. Why do you have to do that? Why do you have to make this so much worse? Say you're sorry. Say, I won't have this happen. Respect to us a little bit. That's really what this is all about. So I hear you, but I do think that there are some rules that need to be put into place, or some things followed out of this guideline. And the MOE, or the MOU, does need to be a binding document that they have to follow.
Where, I was looking through that. Where did you see that, under what section did it say that it was purely?
It was non-binding.
Yeah.
So it is, I believe, on the second page, under notes.
Second page, second page notes.
This is intended to be a guideline and non-binding.
Under notes.
So if I had that document, I mean, technically, do you see it? It's under notes.
I don't see any notice. I don't see any, on the second page?
No, it's right there.
Are you talking about the lease agreement?
The non-binding, yeah.
No, it's in the MOU on the second page, and it says, it is further acknowledged that actual frequency of use or type of usage are unknown at this time, and numbers may fluctuate, hence these parameters are identified to be guidelines and are non-binding. And I assume that that was put in there in the original document, with the understanding that it was unknown what was going to be going on on that property. And so the board didn't want to make a, you know, you have to have six parties, and that's it.
So it says the numbers are non-binding.
That'd be like the frequency of number of events. So under...
But in terms of the times and et cetera, et cetera on here, those are binding.
Mm-hmm. And behind, on the side of it, it has frequency of use. And the whole idea was that this was being put in the middle of our homes, and that it was not going to be a party barn to make money. That was the original intent of what the board did. They were like, yes, you can use the building, but it shouldn't be rented out every week. And I mean, over several times, when the schoolhouse was moved here, it was not to be brought here to be used as a rental to make money. It was more of a historic site to share with people. And, you know, I saw buses there this year with little kids, walking around the property. I thought that was fabulous. You have a book fair. You have the pumpkin. And the pumpkin thing is very busy and kind of a nuisance. You don't hear us coming in for that. The problem is rentals, and when they are utilizing the property and giving it to other people. That is where all of our problems, that is generally when we're coming to you, it's when they've rented the building or they are using it as a party. So that is where I'm asking for that to be limited. I mean, and truthfully, if it continues to be a problem, revoke it. Make it a consequence that, you know, if you continue to violate the neighbors, then it no longer exists. Have the events, the book fair, the ice cream social, all of those things, which seem to be more well-oiled and run by the entire group, and those things do not cause generally a whole lot of issue in the neighborhood. So there's my suggestions for you.
Who else?
My name is Linda Jones, and I live at 2107 Maggie. And I will start with, I share your frustration, because none of us want to be here any more than you want us to be here. Your suggestion of working with Tim, I also have tried to work with Tim to no avail. And my ask out of this, and my frustration is that you sit up here like you have no power. This MOU being non-binding, I only, and I was part of this MOU with you, Michelle, when we got together and helped to devise this. This was an attempt at compromise. And the fact that they were limited to four to five per year, that gave me some peace of mind. Now, if it's 10 a year, then put 10 a year on there. But to say that it's non-binding, and they could have 20, or they could have 30, that I have a problem with. That I don't understand, because it was supposed to be complimentary to the neighborhood. It was supposed to be for educational purposes. That's how we got here. And if we could solve the problem with them, we certainly would not be here. So I don't know what the answer is, but my ask would be that this document would be binding, and what is the middle road agreement on these rentals? And if we have, and I was the one who called the police three times when they had the party barn, and my house was shaking. And the police told me there was nothing they could do. So I don't know if that means our recourse is an attorney, or filing a suit, or what it is that we have to do to get some action. But the fact that we're here every two years is frustrating for all of us, I think. And if we could work with them, we would. But that has not been very, I mean, the MOU should have solved a lot of these problems. And mutual respect would solve a lot of the other ones. So, thank you.
All right. We're still in public comment. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
My name is Grayling Jones, 2107 Maggie Lane. Our property is contiguous with this property. And I want to repeat everything that was said, but basically what you have here is a situation where you've got a memo of understanding, and like was pointed out, three to four times, and it's not going to be quote-unquote, a party barn. The concern that I have, and if you don't think it's real, the last meeting that we had here, you know, the Historic Society said, this is going to be my moneymaker. And I'm thinking to myself, wait a minute, you know, that wasn't the intent here. And so when we took a look at this memo of understanding, we look at it and we go, boy, that's nowhere near what they're talking about, having a rental property where they can make money. So I'd just like you to consider that, and the request, and the ask, is just to say, hey, we're going to take this memo of understanding, and we're going to hold people accountable. Now, if they go ahead and violate that, then there should be some consequence. Where if you had five parties versus four events, then next year, you lose that one. You know, that's an example of what could happen. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else? Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll close down, we'll close public comment. Come on up.
Members of the board, my name is Ken Calortz. I'm an attorney in downtown Green Bay. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Historic Society. It's something I believe in a lot. It's something I believe in a lot. I will start off by saying, Tim has admitted to me he could have handled some of this better. I would have to agree with, I think, the two sisters. Yeah. Some of the stuff they've suggested may be doable. I think a lot of this has hurt feelings. Some of these, I agree with you, Mr. President. Some of these things should not result in this coming before a meeting like this. It's just not necessary. What I'd like to suggest, and I have to clear this with Tim because I said, this just got dumped on me last week, that there've been all these problems going on. What I'd like to do is talk to the board and make my office kind of a clearinghouse for these problems. I think, I have Tim's cell number, and if I have to, I'll drive out, at least in the short term. This means enough to me. If I'm not in my office, there's always a receptionist there, there's a recorder. I can get phone calls on the weekends. I'd like to do that. However, I also want to disabuse the board of any notion that unilaterally this memo of understanding is going to be made binding. It was an agreement, and one party cannot suddenly make an agreement binding with totally different terms. And the other thing is, I would think long and hard about terminating a 99-year lease over what I've heard so far has been, and there are problems, and I would agree. I wouldn't want anybody trespassing on my property either. But you don't terminate a 99-year lease with this much of an investment that we've made in the property and try to suddenly terminate it. That, I would just strongly suggest you give us some time. And let me be a middleman for right now. I can get my contact information to these people. And see if we can just work through this. There's got to be a way. I was on the initial park board, and I represented the village of Bellevue for many, many years when Johnston Park was built. And if you've ever been to Johnston Park, along the, it would be the south side, southeast side of the park, there are homes that back up to the park. And we were always able to work through stuff. There'd be frisbees and balls, sometimes kids cutting through the yard. And we were able to work things out. And there are ways we can do it. Please just give us a chance, but don't impose any draconian measures right now. I don't necessarily, based upon the information I have, concur with everything that was said. However, there is some of it I do know is true. And I would just ask that we be given another chance to work on this.
I think you can rest assured that. I mean, we're here because we are giving it another chance. We're not here discussing the revocation of a 99-year lease. It's just we've been at this for so long, so many times, over and over and over. We're at this point where, you know, what do you, you know, can you imagine revoking a 99-year lease with all of the work in the historical property that went over there and all of the people who love those properties? How that would, you know, sit well in Swamaco? You know, it might work well for, you know, some of the folks on the adjacent property, but for the village itself, that's not an option. But we're sitting here and we're talking about it because there's, in this room, there's a wall that runs down there, and this side isn't talking to this side, and this side isn't talking, they're frustrated with each other, as you've said. Your offer to be a source of mitigation, I think it deserves an opportunity and could be a potential to start this dialogue and get this working again. I would also emphasize that the MOU specifically, as we read it here, the MOU states, these parameters as identified, these parameters specifically as identified are intended to be guidelines and are non-binding. The parameters are, I read this as the parameters being the use of the different facilities four to five times a year, three to four times a year, three times a month, et cetera, et cetera.
Go about another sentence before that where it says, actual frequency use or type of usage are unknown at this time and may fluctuate. So that refers back to the four to five times and whatnot. That non-binding is, we're not limiting to four to five times, is how I read it.
That's how I read it. And Attorney Calortz, with you and your position, obviously, you would have a much better interpretation of that than myself. But that could be potentially a starting point. The other starting point that I had highlighted here was brought up by Mrs. Lund, which is the idea of parking, right? Exploring the idea of potentially using the village parking that's here as parking, keeping that open field open for activities, and then just kind of keeping folks away from the back of the barn, you know, potentially, is that an option? I think your suggestion is acting as mitigator, and it depends on, should board members have other comments they'd like to make? But I think it's a good one.
On number nine, where it says signs in the actual lease, it does talk about at locations by landlord, any signs which are permanently or by applicable zoning tolerances or private restrictions. It's private property, that's how I see it coming there. It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to delineate what is historical property and what is private property.
I would agree.
I'm ready for law. I'm ready for the bar.
I'm working for freedom.
I mean, you can't guarantee them either. There wouldn't be breaking a lease or, I mean, there has to be consequences if something can't get together. But I believe that something can. But you can't say that that can never happen. So you're saying there's no consequences. That's not right either. It's 13 acres. Why in that spot? I mean, couldn't the party have been away from it? I don't know. Are you guys willing to give him a chance?
I'm not sure if there'd be conflict of interest if Attorney Calortz was the attorney from my data state. So there could be a conflict of interest there.
And in fairness, I didn't know, which one's OJ back here? Okay. OJ, I didn't know till I walked in tonight that. I don't believe it would be a conflict, but if you feel it is, let me know. Again, I think we can work this out. And let me say, Tim, and I told him this, and Russ Roland, both could have been a bit more circumspect, maybe, when they talked to people. On the other hand, there was some stuff said at the last meeting, too, that, I mean, again, if the board should decide to, and I get it, you don't want to take that off the table right now. But if a trustee threatens to burn one of our buildings down, and then you go ahead and try to terminate a lease, there will be consequences.
I see what you're saying. I mean, that had nothing to do with me.
No, I, I, I know.
But I'm just saying, we're not taking anything off the table at this point.
Except for burning down a building.
Oh.
That's off the table.
Yeah.
So let's not revisit that any further than we have. We all know, we all know, and that's been discussed, so let's move forward.
But I don't think we have to revisit anything if you guys are willing to give him a chance.
Let's give it a try, folks.
Tom?
Well, I'll just go forward then. So, 2091 Maggie Lane, Swamaco.
So, your name, sorry.
Yeah.
Didn't get your name for the record.
Tom Lund.
Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm willing to give him a chance. We don't want the activity stopped. I mean, it's just, you come home from camping and your gate's open. I mean, you let out your dogs, your dogs could be gone. You know, that's why we have a gate, so, you know. So to have a member of the group say, well, that's funny, it's not very funny, you know. If it's your dogs, you wouldn't want them to get out. I mean, a good thing I noticed right away. I said, why is that gate open? Well, somebody must have been retrieving a ball, but they were pretty deep into our property as trustee Ecker went. That's not right next to the property line by any means. So, yeah, I think we're willing to definitely give him a chance. You know, we were here about the placement of the building, which is very close to my brother and sister-in-law's house. I mean, it's only 10 feet off the lot line, you know, so it's very close. So, but we weren't against the building being put there. We were against the placement. You know, the planning commission had previously said, yeah, cut down the tree and put it farther back so it's kind of behind their house. And we were, you know, that was closer to my house, but I thought it would be better for my in-laws to be there and not right on top. So, I mean, we weren't against the building, per se. We were against where it was placed on the lot. So, I mean, and that's the last time we were here. We haven't been here for a nuisance. We wouldn't even be here tonight if they would have just said, hey, I'm sorry, people came in your yard and opened your fence. I mean, come on. I mean, we're adults, too. We just, you know, we just don't want our property rights violated. I mean, you know, they have the events, they have the book fair, the ice cream social. We don't have a problem with that. We don't complain about that. We're not here every other week about the Historical Society. I think they've done some really good work. I mean, restoring the schoolhouse, I mean, it's amazing how the schoolhouse looks compared to what it looked like when it got there. And I appreciate that they did it quickly, and it didn't sit there for two years like up in Sturgeon Bay where they still have a feed mill that's moved twice, and it's still not done. You know, that's been sitting for five, six years. So I appreciate that they got it done in a timely manner and that they keep the property updated. Now, the only thing I might suggest is, you know, you have a split rail fence between my sister-in-law's property and the schoolhouse. I mean, maybe they need to have a split rail fence up along the whole thing to delineate their property. And, I mean, they don't have to do it right away, just that they did it, that would delineate that property much better. And it might not look bad either, you know. So if it's something that they could do, you know, and give us a time certain, that might help to delineate the property. So, because I think that split rail fence on the other side does delineate what your property is.
Do you have one spokesman I could talk to on this?
Yeah, you can, you could talk to me or my wife. My wife is very well-versed in this, and she is on the Parks Committee for Swamaco.
I'm not saying we're going to agree on it.
Yeah, I know that.
Why don't you guys exchange contacts and then take it from there?
Yeah.
It sounds like we've got a starting point.
Then if we come to an agreement, we can come back and do that.
Sounds like we've got a starting point.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you both. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Or otherwise, we'll close the public comment.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion on the floor to close public comment from trustee Schneider, seconded by trustee Andrews. Any other further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you, everyone, for your time. All right. We're moving on to item number six now. Item number six this evening is the public appearances. Public appearances in this meeting are intended for anyone who wishes to speak on an item not currently on the agenda. If you'd like to, come forward, provide us with your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind.
Okay. Brown County put up those lights on VELP by White Pine. So yesterday, a constituent of mine almost got T-boned there when somebody went right through the red light. So I talked to the county highway department today. They're going to put up some signs on VELP saying, hey, there's a, there's a stop up ahead, you know, because people aren't used to it. I mean, the first time I saw it, I was worried about the person behind me not stopping and just rear-ending me because they were like, you know, all of a sudden, they screeched their brakes. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot to get used to, that there's a light up there. So hopefully, that'll help, so.
Much appreciated. I saw somebody go through that light just the other day as well.
Yeah, so, I mean.
When is it gonna, is it gonna go to green and red?
Well, I don't know when they're going to do that, but they're going to put some signs up on the approach telling you that there's a signal ahead.
Signal ahead.
You know, so that you're kind of prepared, hopefully.
And it's temporary, right?
It's temporary.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just during the construction on Lineville, you know, so that they can have traffic more orderly. I mean, realistically, right there should have been like a three-way roundabout in the first place because it's kind of dangerous there, especially.
So who at the county can we talk to about that?
Well, you can talk to me. I'm on the county board, so, if you have any questions. Yeah, so, so I have the ear to the highway commissioner, and hopefully, we'll get by this without any, anybody having a terrible accident or anything.
We would love to get funding for a roundabout there. We just can't afford it.
Yeah, I know. Well, you'd have to pay for part of it, and the county would have to do the other. But I think there'd have to be a traffic study and such on that. But, yeah, that's a, that's a tricky one right there because of the school.
I was about to say, with the high school, with the impending closures, it's going to be pain.
What if we liked the light? What if?
To keep the light?
I don't know.
I don't know if they're going to want to keep the light, but, I mean, it's just basically because Lineville's going to be closed, but, you know.
What was the timing?
I think long-term, possibly a roundabout would be better than a light. And it's more in keeping with what you have further south.
Did you say what the timing was to put those warning signs up on the signal sign?
They're going to do that tomorrow.
Oh, excellent.
There's already, there's already signs up, the stoplight ahead signs. Those have been up since, I think, Friday.
Yeah.
And then they turned them into red flashing, and we had some concerns about that. There aren't any stop bars that are painted. And we talked to the county, that should be done soon. We don't know what that means, but soon. And then we'll have it set up on.
Yeah, it's just, it's just kind of a dangerous situation because of the suddenness.
Well, they've been up there for a while now.
Yeah, I know. But, I mean, people are like, they're just not used to it.
You can put all the safeguards you want into something.
Oh, I know.
When people get behind the wheel, they're supposed to pay attention to their surroundings. And some people?
You know, but, I mean.
Just got the blinders on.
But on J, we put up a flashing light with speed for that property.
You're right about that.
I mean, that was the best we could do, Brian, on there, so, you know, I see that they've done some work themselves to protect themselves.
All right.
Elijah did.
Yeah, so.
I lived in Europe for a number of years. Everyone's used to roundabouts. Everyone goes at the right, right time and everything like that. When I get, you know, when I look out here, I'm like, yeah, we don't know what we're doing.
I don't know. I think we're better than we were, say, 15, 20 years ago when it was a new concept because they're all throughout Brown County. I mean, Brown County has more roundabouts than any population center in the United States. So.
And most of them are right over here on Lineville.
A lot of them in DePereaux.
At least 10 of them. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Yep.
Anyone else care to come forward to speak to an item not on the agenda? Now is your opportunity. Seeing no one, we will move on to item number seven. Item number seven this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of previous minutes of the village board dated June 17th, 2024, and the May 20 and the May 2024 animal control report. Are there questions or discussion on the consent agenda?
Oh, Michelle, this is nitpicky, but on page two of the minutes, it says seconded by trustee and it doesn't say which one of us. I, I mean, I have no clue who it was, but.
Well, thank goodness it was seconded by a trustee.
And I'm sure it was, but yeah.
I will take a look at it and get it right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other items?
I don't think so.
If there are no other items, I would look for a, a motion to approve the consent agenda with the note made by trustee Eckert. I'll offer that motion. I'll offer a motion to approve the consent agenda with the note offered by trustee Eckert. Is there a second? I've got a second from trustee Stevens. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, item number eight this evening is planning and zoning items. Item 8A this evening is a request by Joshua Krieger, 3299 Northwood Road, for a rezone from rural residential to agriculture on parcel SU 389-2-2. The property is located on the west side of Northwood Road, 500 feet north of Whopperwill Road. Zoning administrator dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at about an eight and a third acre lot here. It was just recently created through a certified survey map a couple of months back. Code does require five acres for egg zoning and they do meet that requirement. They're asking for the rezone to allow expanded use of the property without any additional permissions with the already allowable egg uses if so rezoned. The property is currently surrounded by all family-owned property. It is in an area shown to remain rural. No sewer or water services are expected to serve this area. Your motion by planning commission was to recommend approval on a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak to this item? Now is your opportunity. Are there other questions for zoning administrator dunks on this item? If not, I would love to entertain a motion.
I will make the motion to approve ordinance 2024-09, rezoning parcel SU-389-2-2 from rural residential to agriculture.
So we have a motion from trustee Schneider to approve ordinance 2024-09, rezoning parcel SU 389-2-2 from rural residential to agriculture. That has been seconded by trustee Neto. Any further questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, item B, planning and zoning. Request from Big Sky Real Estate for a final plat for Shidi Farms' third addition on SU 688 as prepared by Verbicker. Zoning administrator dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at just under a 29-acre parcel here. It is already zoned rural residential and it is in agricultural use at this time, pretty much surrounded by rural residential and ag with single-family homes and agricultural use. The final plat is 21 lots with about 1,400 feet of new roadway. Lots 27 and 28 are 29 square feet below the 50,000-square-foot requirement. This is due to the United States Postal Service Cluster Box that is located on these two lots. We, as staff, have been requesting that those be on dedicated right-of-way rather than within an easement. If we put it within an easement, it would bring it back up to those required square footages from a staff's perspective. We prefer to keep it in right-of-way. It just makes it simpler on our end, but worst-case scenario, if you really feel we have to hit that, that 50,000, then we need to take that back out as right-of-way and put it in as, as just an easement for the placement of those. It really doesn't mean anything to the plat. Doesn't change any building setbacks. Really doesn't change anything. This is just a UPS, USPS requirement that has come about in the last couple of plats and it was not, its location was not shown on the preliminary and that's why that wasn't addressed at that time. The road name, we'll be going to the Historical Preservation Commission tomorrow night for their approval. I don't expect any issues with that, but that is one of your conditions, that they approve that road name. They do have the, the right to, to look at those and, and approve them or make recommendations. Stormwater plan still needs to be completed and approved by the village. Sewer and water services are not available at this time and we haven't made any plans for any extensions to serve this or any surrounding areas. It does not appear that wetlands are affecting the plat. A developer's agreement would need to be completed for the additional roads and any stormwater facilities that may be required. Parkland fees are now due at building permit and administrative fees of 200 per lot or per REU will be due at the signing of the final plat. Planning commission did recommend approval with the five conditions, the completion of that stormwater plan, approval of the road, the payment of the administrative fees, approval of a developer's agreement, and meeting all other requirements.
One question on the, the comments here. Does, do we need to put a note in here with regard to the easement for the grouped mailboxes?
Right now, they're shown as village right-of-way, so there would be no easement.
Okay, because it's shown that way on the plat. Yep.
Right.
All right, got it. I don't have any other questions. Are there other questions for zoning administrator dunks on this? This is also a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this item? Come forward now. No one?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of the Shidi Farms' third addition with the following conditions. One, completion and approval of a stormwater plan. Two, approval of Evelyn Rose Lane by the Historical Preservation Commission. Three, payment of the administrative fees of $4,200. Four, approval of a developer's agreement. Five, meet the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you. So we have a motion from trustee Andrews to approve the plat for the Shidi Farms' third addition with the conditions 1 through 5 as stated, and that motion has been seconded by trustee Schneider. Any further comments or discussion? Very well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay, we are off to item number nine, remaining 9A. Operator's license denial for Amber McToxen. Clerk Bartletti.
All right, so we did have a denial recommendation for Amber R. McToxen based on the first and second offenses, which is substantially related to the circumstances of the licensed activity. And she is not in attendance. She was notified in writing and also by phone. So we are recommending denial.
Okay, are there any questions for clerk Bartletti or any questions on this item?
I'm going to recuse myself off the vote.
So there should be, the denial recommendation is here. Do we need a motion to accept the denial? The denial recommendation is made.
I would recommend the board motion to either move to approve or deny the operator's license.
Make a motion to deny Amber McToxen operator's license application.
So we have a motion from trustee Eckert to deny the operator's license submitted by Amber R. McToxen, and that has been seconded by trustee Schneider. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Five, five zero.
Five zero, five one recusal. Thank you for the reminder. All right, item number 10, Public Works and Utility Items. Item 10A this evening is resolution 24008, accepting the sanitary sewer facilities needs study. Director Smits.
All right, thank you. Heers Associates completed the sanitary sewer facilities needs assessment that the village requested of them from later last year. The scope of this study changed from evaluating current system needs to expansion of the collection system to the west down Lineville Road. This technical memo focuses on expansion of the system to the west down Lineville Road and the village being able to service those areas when development is ready. The village does not have many sewered service lots available and as Howard continues to develop north, the drive for development north of Lineville Road is going to increase. As you know, we have paid off our debt service from the last two interceptor projects and we were using the impact fees collected based on the last facilities needs assessment to pay off that debt service. The sewer utility needed an updated needs assessment to determine what fees should be collected and what they can be allocated towards. The fee calculated to facilitate the expansion of the sewer expansion to the west down Lineville Road was calculated to be $5,500. So before you tonight is the study that Heers provided based on the information that staff had given to them earlier in the year. And we would be looking for you guys to discuss and approve or deny accepting this technical memo as the study completed to update the sanitary sewer facility needs assessment used to be used for either collecting impact fees or connection fees. And the Public Works and Utility Committee did approve this 7-0 at our June meeting. And we would also be looking for a, a resolution 24008, accepting the findings of the sanitary sewer facility needs assessment study. And one note on the resolution is the bottom, whereas we would, I'd like to change that. I had the wrong section in there. It should be section 66.0821, which identifies service charges for sewerage and stormwater systems rather than impact fees. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. That should be 66.0821.
And just to be clear, there wouldn't need to be two motions. The, the potential motion for you is to accept or deny the resolution 20.
One covers the other.
2408, yeah.
So trustee Eckert, you're part of this commission. Is there any, are there any interesting secrets you'd like to? Details you'd like to share with us?
Oh, well, like Kay pointed out, we have impact fees in place to. I mean, we're, we're not bound to do this in 2028. We still would have to give the go-ahead for other things. We're just accepting the study. But if we would ever have to fork out the 2.3 mil or, that would be impact fees and then in the future would be connection fees. So no current sewer customers would have to fork that out. Correct?
Correct.
So you're comfortable with this plan?
As comfortable as I can be, yes.
Understood.
I mean, that's, there's, there's always a lot to swallow, but yeah.
Okay. Are there other questions or discussion for director Smits? Yeah, I appreciate having a plan like this to follow that we can refer back to.
And, and we need to in order to go to the connection fees.
Right.
Yep.
Andy, you're, you're okay with this report then?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, obviously, we see where we're, where our neighboring communities are developing and we know the Lineville corridor is going to be a hot item here coming up in five, 10, 15 years, knowing that the school district is doing as well as it is. And Howard is developing north to Lineville Road and at some point, somebody's going to want to pursue the, the north side.
No issues, not even a little bit? Nothing that you wish was in there or wish you weren't?
Um, no, so the original study kind of looked at the sanitary system as a whole and we kind of narrowed it down to more of just expansion and where we see the village growing in the future years. So, you know, sewer, sewer utility is doing well. It's not, you know, falling apart. So we have a fairly new system out there. We're not like a lot of aging communities where you have to put a lot back in at this point in time. You know, we're only 20, 30 years old here, so everything's in relatively good shape. So the focus we saw was, was expansion and ability, able to service additional areas.
If director Smits is good with it? He knows it a lot better than I could, so I'm all right with it.
Would someone like to offer a motion?
Uh, I will. Let's see, I'll make them, do you want the motion for, on the front or the resolution?
I'd recommend just the, a motion on the resolution.
All right. You want me to read out the whole thing?
No.
I just, I will make a motion to accept resolution 24008, a resolution accepting the findings of the sanitary sewer district needs assessment study.
So a motion from trustee Schneider to accept the findings of the sanitary sewer facility needs assessment study per resolution 24008. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. Any other further questions or discussions on this item? Yeah, let's do a roll call. It's financial.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
All right, thank you. Okay, item 10B, sanitary sewer connection fees, impact fees. Director Smits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Late in 2023, staff recommended the idea of switching from an impact fee to a connection fee for new sanitary sewer connections to the village's sewerage system. Currently, through the village ordinance, we have an impact fee that was set forth by the 2004 Foltin Van Dyke Needs Assessment Study. As we know, impact fees are very restrictive along with must-spend deadlines. The village has recently reviewed and updated needs assessment study from Heers that has a new recommended fee to support expansion of the sewer system to accommodate future growth. The 2024 impact fee for the VELP interceptor was $5,343.55 and the proposed fee would be $5,500. There is also currently two different impact fee rates, one for the VELP interceptor and one for our Belmont interceptor. We would look to update that in our village ordinance to only have one connection fee going forward now that both debt services for those original interceptors are paid off. So staff asked the attorney Lori Kobza, who has helped us with PSC rate cases and other filings. She's an expert in the field and we asked her with a series of questions and those are copied in the memo and also her response is attached. So if you have any questions regarding any of that, I'm not going to read through it all. We'd be here for another hour. I'll try to answer anything you have related to what she responded. But basically, the impact fee is more restrictive, has a lot of limitations. You cannot use it on existing maintenance or existing system conditions. So connection fees you can. So we do have this plan in place that we would use our connection fees to, you know, expand the system down to the west and service additional capacity. But if something were to come up, these connection fees could be used for a maintenance-type item. So if something major were to fail, a lift station needs to be replaced. You know, you're talking of $750 million or better probably. So this could supplement some of those projects if they were to come up. So I think as a whole, it would benefit the village to switch from the impact to the connection fee. Lori also agreed with that in her response. So we would be looking tonight to have the village board approve staff working with attorney Lori Kobza to update village ordinance to discontinue collecting impact fees and to start collecting connection fees for the sanitary sewer system. The Public Works and Utility Commission did support this decision, seven to zero at the June meeting.
Thank you.
Kay, you're okay with this, too? Makes it easier?
Yes, I would prefer the connection fee over the impact fee now that we have a debt paid on the clean water.
It's nice that you're not held to having to get new infrastructure and you don't have a time limit.
Yep.
So we can repair our aging system too as it ages. So it sounds like a good thing.
Going forward, this works out well. What about the funds that we have in there already?
There are no sewer impact.
There's nothing left in it.
Fees, no. In fact, our last payment that was due May 1st was $605,000. We only had $105,000 worth of impact fees to pay that and I had to tap into. And I had to tap into, as you saw on the audit report, the cash. And anything I'm collecting now, between now and then, we'll go back to reimburse.
The other 400, 7,000.
I'm sure we won't, we won't collect that by the time we get it changed to connection.
Sure.
You don't have enough lots to collect that.
You sure?
No, I, no.
This is preferable, less legal restrictions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? I see it was approved by the Public Works and Utility Commission by a vote of 7 to 0. So I, I would offer a motion, if there is no other discussion, to approve the village, approve village staff working with attorney Lori Kobza to update village ordinance to discontinue collecting impact fees and to start collecting connection fees for the sanitary sewer. Is there, and I have a second from trustee Schneider. Any other further comments or questions? This is an approval of a contract, so let's do this as a roll call, please.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously 6 to 0.
Okay. So now discussion on future agenda items. Anyone with future agenda items that they want to get out there? Trustee Andrews.
So I would like to have something put on the agenda for regarding the conduct of trustee Neto and remarks that were made and have some discussion regarding that.
Okay. So there is, that's for a future agenda item. Do we need two votes for that?
Yeah.
We have one vote? Do we have another vote? I'll, I'll second that. Trustee Stevens has seconded that, so we have that on for the follow-up agenda. Do you have any specifics that you want to highlight?
Well, in the trustee manual, there was numerous things that were, that were violated. One, threatening remark, some other stuff, and discipline-type things.
Okay.
Would you be okay going through that and being specific just so we can have it down?
Well, let's, let's bring it forward.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have it.
Let's take that forward as a group. Can we bring that forward as a group? Does this, is this something that belongs, at least initially, in closed session?
There wouldn't be any statute that you'd be able to use to discuss.
To put it in closed session. So this would be an open session. So we should come forward with the, the requirements for the trustee, and then everyone should be well-versed on that prior to the meeting to understand what, what goes into that, and then we can discuss those issues. Does that fit what you're looking for?
Yeah. I'll have those, those items.
Is that enough direction to staff?
Those items highlighted.
I think we'll just wait for trustee Andrews to submit whatever it is you want to submit. We'll put it in the packet.